Sorry to push you vice mayor.
I wasn't allowed to.
Okay, first on the agenda is the Seminole Airport Authority, roll call.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
John Kramer.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Dee Patterson. Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority? If not, we move on to item number one, consideration and possible action to declare a surplus, the obsolete AWOS equipment at the airport, and to accept the sole bid of $351 from William Marvin Johnson, LLC to purchase the equipment.
What is AWOS? I'm just curious.
Automatic Weather Observation System.
Oh, okay. I don't want to be in it.
And that may or may not be true, but I...
But it fits the letters.
Automated, thank you.
I don't know anything about this, but I assume there's no parks or anything like that that could be of use.
No.
Or anything.
No, it's toast.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Gas Authority. Call that meeting to order, roll call Jay.
John Kramer. Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Dee Patterson. Bill Watlin.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
You're here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Utilities Authority. We'll call that meeting to order, roll call.
Dee Patterson. John Kramer. Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience? If not, we move on to resolution number one, resolution consideration and possible action to approve resolution number SUA 2017-07, a resolution adjusting solid waste rates the city charges its customers. I assume this is on the matter that we've discussed in the past.
That's correct. Mr. Vice Mayor and counsel, we opened bids this morning on trash service. We had the current service, WCA, did submit a bid, and their bid is very competitive. Central Disposal, who handles both Shawnee and We Woka, also submitted a bid. We are taking those bids under advisement, and we're probably going to ask for a special city council meeting coming up, but in order to take care of our immediate need, we are not under contract with WCA at this point, and they had advised us that they needed to do a rate adjustment, or do nothing at all, like, don't pick up our trash, so we said, you know what? We think we can do a rate adjustment until we work out the details of your contract, or if Central Disposal gets the contract. So, in the interim between now and the time that we issue the contract based upon the bids that we receive today, we need to go ahead and put these rates in place.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so ordered. That brings us to the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. That meeting is called to order, roll call Jay.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Dee Patterson. Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
John Kramer. Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Shane Fisher. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Isagademisi, mishka hangagigudai, pumikasapkanequichedimado, momet potolofa seminole, momen posti amogan, irinoki chiquidis, pumochimi isagademisi ano getzkas. God whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Elections and appointments, consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Tabitha Green to the library board to fill the seat vacated by Grayson Atchison, who is resigning, the term being through August the 31st, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Uh, yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the city council? That brings us then to approvals and acceptances, bids, number one, consideration and possible action to accept the proposal from Waters Edge Aquatic Design, LLC, for concept planning for an aquatic center in Seminole, and the amount of $8,000 to be funded from the general fund, community services, pool operations.
Vice Mayor, I have a question. I'd like to explain, Mr. Anson, exactly what that is.
Okay. In order to get a plan or renderings for a new swimming pool, regardless of the location, we're going to need a professional service to come look at it and kind of get a feel for what size, what the needs are for the community. This firm did the same thing for Shawnee. I don't plan on ours being near that big or elaborate, but these guys have a great reputation. Everybody we've checked them out with says they're fantastic. It's just something that's going to get a plan for you guys to consider going forward with, what are we going to do about a swimming pool?
Thank you.
So when this is finished, will there be blueprints, that kind of thing, or is that coming later?
Yeah, not, I don't, this won't be the construction piece of it. This will be more conceptual, need-based, you know, how many people will fit in a 200,000 gallon swimming pool? And then, of course, that'll lead us into where do we want to locate.
What's our capacity now? Or what was it?
Wow, a whole bunch. More kids. Yeah, it was, it was tremendous amount of kids.
We'll put more in now because there's no water.
It'll be like a college student contest. Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration and possible action to declare a surplus, the 2006 senior citizens bus, and to approve donating the bus to Red Cloud Aviation to be used as a complimentary vehicle for pilots and passengers at the airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinances. Number three, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1207, an ordinance amending Title 17, Chapter 4, Section 17-4-8, Commercial Refuge Collection, and Section 1749, Mobile Containers Provided by City in Regulations to the Code of Ordinances.
Boy.
Same issue. We've got to continue to provide service, and we need that to continue for WCA to continue until we get a new contract in place.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration and possible action to approve the emergency clause associated with ordinance number 1207. Make it effective immediately.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are two addendums to the agenda, item 5A, consideration and possible action to approve resolution 2017-18, a resolution extending the terms of city council from two years to four years, and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
By B, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2017-19, a resolution setting forth a procedure for removal of elected officials by recall petition, and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes.
We have a change on the second paragraph of the resolution. And we were notified by the election board that we have to have the language on the ballot, 200 words or less.
Right.
So we've had to make this a little bit more concise, and I would like, if possible, to read the amended version into the record and ask the court.
Please read it into the record, Mr. City.
Ask the council to approve it if the council's in agreement. Uh, this, again, the first paragraph would remain the same, the heading would remain the same, and then the second full paragraph would read, "A recall petition shall be obtained from the city clerk and a declaration filed by those circulating said petition. No one petition shall be effective against more than one officer of the city. The petition must be in proper form and returned to the city clerk within 30 days of its initiation in order to be certified as valid. Failure to return any petition within the designated time shall render it null and void. Upon receipt, the city clerk shall verify the signatures within 30 days." And then yes and no.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to resolutions, consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2017-17, a resolution allowing for the sale and consumption of 3.2 beer in the parking lot at Second and Osage between 1:00 PM on Friday, September 16th, and 2:00 AM on Saturday, September 17th, for the Seminole Nation Days poker run.
Vice Mayor, I think we have some people that'd like to speak on that that showed up tonight.
Just fine. If you'll come up here and just state your name at the microphone and...
Right behind, right behind you, there's a podium there.
Is it on? Hello? No.
Yes.
Can you hear me? I'm just trying to read them with Bumpy bricks, or it's Warren. And we are wanting to, we've already got approval to walk off Second Street from Broadway to Osage. The reason for that being is that there will be quite a few motorcyclists participating in the poker run. That will provide a safe place for them to park their bikes and to hang out a little bit, as we are doing the poker run, so that we can rest for quite some time. We also wanted to be able to serve, or to at least put out a full bar is actually what we're wanting to do, in the parking lot. Uh, we have the bar, of course, inside, and it's just, since it's blocked off, we figured that we could kind of provide a little more safety and control, and extend those hippies outside as well. They will end the poker run at 3:00 at Bumpy, and we looked to create to go ahead and do the probably closing time with the best hippies.
Has all the insurance that we require for any other event been taken, I mean, don't we have insurance requirements? We have something on city property, is all that been taken care of? Special event insurance is probably something that, this is kind of a first, I think, as far as alcohol is concerned, usually it's been 3.2 beer, but... Well, is this coming from the Seminole Nation, or is, I mean, because we've never really done this for an individual either. We, it's usually been something like the Chamber, or Seminole Main Street, or some organization in town. I mean, if we start doing this for individuals, you know, are we going to, I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not saying one way or the other, but I'm a little...
I am saying, I will say something after the Seminole Nation, if you don't mind. Um, I spoke with the chief, the vice chief, and the Seminole Nation Days committees, and all of them wish to have their name removed from this, wish to have Seminole Nation and Seminole Nation Days removed from the ordinance, and that can be replaced with the parade of bikes, but they do wish to have, in the resolution, to have that, to have Seminole Nation to be removed.
Did you make that as a motion?
Uh, yes, oh, well.
Also, the resolution only says 3.2 beer.
Actually, the resolution says non-alcohol, and the resolution still...
There is a motion to substitute for the Seminole Nation in the resolution.
Yeah, I can make that motion, yeah.
But is that to motion no, or, I mean, should that be done in the...
It's a motion to replace Seminole Nation and Seminole Nation Days with the parade of bikes.
Okay, so we can do that, okay, I'll second that.
Roll call.
So this is on the motion to amend the resolution?
To amend the resolution by changing Seminole Nation, Seminole Nation Days, parade of bikes.
And there's been a second, so...
And it's been moved and seconded.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion to amend the resolution passes.
Now the resolution is before you for discussion.
Comment for a moment?
Sure.
I think this is the kind of thing that is going to benefit our community in the long run. Not only immediately will we see some benefit from word getting out that we're open to have events that involves 3.2 beer, or whatever, public kind of events. I've attended a lot of these things, I'd say a lot of them, a few of these kinds of things in different cities, and it seems to me that the revenue gain from events like this, and the attention that it, the positive attention that it brings to the cities, also is followed up by arts events, other kinds of public, out in the public air events that can be organized and ran smoothly. I don't know of any, went to a large one in Guthrie, and everything went smoothly there. I think there was probably one person who was arrested for the whole weekend of events, it was music, music event. This is a one-day event, kind of test the water, one of such things, I think that it's...
Well, this also says, this says poker run, and I'm just a little concerned too, is that, I mean, is that where it ends? Because I don't want people drinking beer and getting in to go to the next place to get their card for a poker run, I'm not sure, you know?
Have you ever been to a poker run?
Well, I know how they work on the lake, I've never done one, but I know, you know, you go from one marina to the other, but I've never...
She said it was at the end.
It is at the end, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Vice Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
You know, the resolution says 3.2 beer, and then when you were talking, you said you would like to have an open bar. Well, I don't think we can put that in there because the resolution only says 3.2. I might be speaking out of turn here, but one thing I would like to add to this is the fact that, you know, we've done this for other people, and if you start not doing it for others, is there a problem there that, hey, you know, we're pointing fingers, or, or, you know, I am, why am I not being allowed to do this when other people were? I think if you stick with the resolution with 3.2 beer, and keep it on premises, I don't have a problem with it personally, but I don't think we can try to change this resolution after it's been presented to us for what we've done, looking and reading and understanding it. And that's about all I have to say about it.
That's kind of what we publish to, yeah.
Yeah.
I might make a recommendation too, that we don't, if we're going to have any of this on any city property, there's going to have to be special event insurance acquired. I mean, that we require that at the wellness center and anywhere else that we have alcohol, I mean, I call it alcoholic beverages, 3.2 beer or anything. That would need to be done, in my opinion, and also, I believe that we require security in some form or fashion that has to be provided, I'm sure you would probably do that anyway.
Yeah, we will have security.
So that would be something, we've come a long way from doing a, the first time this was done at our, it was from our centennial, now we're, now we've got bikers and beers, so it's, we've come a long way, but, you know, street parties, but that'd be my recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Do you have event insurance?
We have gotten a price, we just, we didn't see any of these at the purchase just yet until we come to you guys.
And that's usually, we normally require that in addition to, you know, the premises liability insurance, I mean, for events, am I right, Sharon?
Yes.
I mean, regardless of where it's at, but...
I think on event insurance, they have to get it within two weeks of the event, and there's a time period, so that has plenty of...
There you go.
Do you, you've had it before, right?
We do it at events.
Okay. Okay.
So the insurance that was presented in our packet was really for the business?
Was for the event.
So what's in here?
No, it was only, it was an event insurance.
So this is the event insurance?
Yeah, it's separate from our liability insurance.
Well, if it's event insurance, I haven't looked at the policy, but if it's an event insurance, and, you know, the, the city of Seminole, if it's going to be on the parking lot, probably needs to be a loss payee on the, and we can, we can talk about that, they can modify that, so I don't really see that a problem, but we need to define, you need to define probably the time, if that's not in the resolution, and what you're allowing. Well, being that this parking lot's directly to their, next to their restaurant, you know, I just hate to see, you know, a bunch of different people coming in and, you know, wanting to do this all over the place, and us having to be, you know, it's not like confined to the municipal building, I mean, I don't want this kind of thing, you know? And I'm pretty, I've always been pretty, you know, easygoing when it comes to this stuff, it's not that I'm against it, I just hate to see different individuals come up and just want to do this wherever they want to if we're starting something, and that's, that's my only... Well, you need to, you need to be thinking about that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not taking a side here, but, you know, there are other things that you're going to be probably presented with in the future, I mean, is this going to be extended to the park, to the wellness center, to the walking trails, to the pool, you know, things like that, so you need to be aware of that. I'm, I also agree with Larry that it's a, you know, it's a good thing, we do this for other organizations, and probably a good thing for us in the future, in limited circumstances, but you just, no, this is, this is uncharted territory for us, and it could easily, you know, one bad, one, one bad incident, and it's probably going to be turned off, so... And also, are we going to be doing this in the street? Is this confined to the parking lot?
As I understand it, it's going to be fenced off, the streets will be fenced off.
The parking lot will be, but the street will be closed, is that the intent? The Second Street, south of Broadway, is virtually unused, and Arrow, or not Arrow, excuse me, Clausings, who has the only stor, other storage facility down there, has sent a letter endorsing this, so Second Street is not an issue for us.
And as I said, it is adjacent to their facility.
Right.
So, there's bathroom facilities and all that stuff available, so it's not like people who have to come out. And, uh, these aren't biker gangs.
Yeah, right. That was just a fun, fun statement.
What did you say, bikers? That conjures up an image in some people's mind, but in the last several years, a lot of nice people ride bikes and do good things for the community. And this group of folks, it's what, they're raising funds for a charitable cause.
I agree that we're, we're getting a little bit on uncharted waters here, but you don't know until you experience it, and I suggest that we try it, if there's a problem, then we address that problem at the time, because, I mean, these people, they're trying to do things and bring people into Seminole and having events. Alcohol's not for everybody, I totally understand that, but if, but if it gets, you know, if it gets out of hand, then we, we got to deal with it as a council.
And they are trying to do it the right way here, so...
Yeah, they're, they're going through the channels and trying to do it the right way, so I make a motion to approve. Yeah, they're, they're, they're going through the channels and trying to do it the right way, so I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded, uh, to approve the resolution as amended. Uh, roll call.
I'm on some.
Yes. Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
abstain.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wartland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, we interrupt this city council meeting. I'm interrupting this to let everybody know that the school bond issue passed by 70.3 percent. Now, sorry, we can get back to business now. I'm not saying it's
That was business.
That was business, yeah. Okay, that brings us to current business. Item number six, consideration and possible action to approve closing Second Street from Broadway, one block south to Osage from 1:00 PM Friday, September 16th till 2:00 AM on Saturday, September the 17th for the Seminole Nation Days Poker Run.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wartland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number seven, consideration and possible action to approve granting an easement and right-of-way to Parks Manufacturing LLC to use a city-owned driveway for entering and exiting the plant on Bourne Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wartland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eight, consideration and possible action to approve renewing the lease agreement with the Seminole Lions Club for use of Magnolia Park for the annual Snowman Wonderland Light Display and Activities effective November 1, 2017 through January 10, 2018.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wartland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Uh, I'll abstain since I'm a member.
Motion passes.
Number nine, consideration and possible action to approve the agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the installation and maintenance of new signal lights at the intersection of Highway 270, East Broadway, and 270B, Harvey Road, at no cost to the city for the initial installation of the lights. That means we have to pay for burned-out bulbs when they're replaced? Yes. Later on, we're, we're gonna be in charge of that.
And so there's, they did a study and found that the traffic weren't, or is it because of accidents that occurred there?
I'd never asked the question. I just said, yes, sir, when they said we, we would put a light in for you guys if you'll, if you'll give us the easements. And they would pay for it, and I said, okay, we're in.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Wartland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to reports. Uh, Mayor is not here, so he doesn't get to report. City manager? Uh, just wanna say congratulations to all the, the people that put in a lot of hard work to, for our children to get a new high school. Congratulations, you guys deserve it. Uh, we will be asking for a special city council meeting very soon. As I mentioned earlier, we need to discuss, uh, the garbage service, the, the solid waste service that we've got. Uh, and also, we've got a proposal that is being submitted by the Department of Transportation uh, where they would overlay everything from the college to Willis Number One uh, on Bourne Boulevard and Broadway and take up the bricks on Broadway, replace the bricks and the sidewalks with, uh, obviously, uh, conventional materials. So, uh, the, the catch to it is that they want us to take it and take the maintenance on all of that road. Uh, by the time we have our special meeting, I'll have numbers for you all. Uh, in essence, I think what they're talking about doing is an eight million dollar project between the college and Willis Number One. More than likely, that would last us probably, I'm gonna say 10 to 12 years. And at that point, we would end up needing some repair, some patchwork at, at a minimum. And I'll have total cost on what a relay would, uh, overlay would cost, uh, from tip to bottom. Uh, and you guys will be able to make a decision. That, that one's obviously at your pay scale, not mine. Uh, it's a, it's a screaming deal upfront. It, it's gonna be something that you're passing on to future city councils if you want to accept it. But, uh, I've heard from many of you that you want something done with those bricks, uh, especially on Broadway. Uh, not so much on Main, but definitely on Broadway, and this is one way to get that done.
Can you save the bricks and we can maintenance using the bricks back?
Yes, sir. We've got, we've got piles of bricks already. And we'll have more piles of bricks. Anything else?
No.
City attorney?
Nothing.
Board one, I just want to express my deep appreciation to everyone for their support and their prayers and, uh, their help at the time of Jan's death. It's much, much appreciated. Thank you.
Larry?
I have nothing. I'm just glad that the school bond has passed. I hope you have reliable sources for that information. And, uh, look forward to, uh, working toward improving education in Seminole.
Board two, Stephanie Lambert.
Thank you, Jay and Sharon, for all your help today, um, you know, helping, um, with all of my questions that I, that I have. And, um, and thank you guys, and I'm excited about the school too, and that's it. And I guess mow your lawns. We didn't say that this time.
Board three, Jeff?
Well, I think the same thing about, it shows that the citizens, once they actually have a good proposal in front of them, and as long as we do what we say we're gonna do, that they will support it, and they recognize what the future means and the possibilities. So, again, a lot of hard work by a lot of people, but thank you for the kids' future and Seminole's future.
Tim?
I just wanna say, dead old, what Jeff pretty much said it, and I appreciate all our city workers. I see them all the time driving around in the town, and, I mean, these guys are, they're working their bottoms off on these mowers and stuff, and they're shorthanded, and I just wanna say thank you to all those guys, regardless of what their jobs are. Uh, they're dedicated people, and it's hard to find people like that nowadays.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Board four, Chris?
Well, I just wanna thank everybody who got out and voted today, especially those who don't guess. Talking about people who've worked for this, Steve's probably worked on this longer than anybody and has been trying to get us a new high school for years and years, and he deserves a great deal of appreciation for that and for all he does, for all the visions he has for our town.
Being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post order.